Kalanowski, here. Mr. Numoff?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Vice President Darrow?
Here.
President McCollum?
Here. First item on the agenda tonight is approval of board minutes. Members have any previous board minutes that they've been able to review ahead of time? Any addition or any kind of a motion, please, I guess, to previous board minutes?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Numoff. Roll call, please.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Numoff?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. So to tonight's meeting agenda, any additions or corrections to the agenda, Mr. Sawyers?
None, thank you.
With none, request a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Mr. Bush?
Second.
Second, Ms. Kalanowski. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Numoff?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. That brings us to an opportunity for a public hearing, Mr. Sawyers.
I'm in accordance with the Ohioary Vice Code, we received a request from Donna LeBeau to have eligibility for retirement as our middle school principal. On effective July 31, 2020, is our intent as a school district to rehire Mrs. LeBeau as the middle school principal. In accordance with O R C, we have to hold a public hearing to provide opportunity for the public to participate in conversation relative to our intent to retire, rehire Mrs. LeBeau into the same position. Mrs. Jenkins nor I received emails today from community members or prior to today, emails from community members to participate in the public hearing. All of the commentary that I've received to date has been positive towards Mrs. LeBeau and hopes that the Board of Education would consider her contract action again in May. So to this end, I do not believe there's any public participation to be had. Is that correct, Mrs. Jenkins?
That is correct.
Any questions from the board? With none, that would constitute the public hearing for the retire, rehire of Mrs. LeBeau. Super Tenants items, Mr. Sawyers.
I'm going to defer our conversation related to remote learning as we go through the presentations this evening. So I specifically want to talk about that information later in the agenda. So we're going to start with the presentations and at the conclusion of the presentations, I'll have some additional information to share.
Very good. So then discussion.
One minute, Mr. Sawyers, were you gonna, did you say you were gonna read the plea update?
Yeah, hold on a second, you're actually right.
I can read that if you want to have it.
So we did receive from the Plain Local Education Association an April 2020 highlight, Pete Barnes, a fifth grade science teacher, is currently spearheading a BioBlitz for fifth graders, supported by Sandy Reed through the E3 Learning Lab. The citizens, this citizen science event was featured in National Geographic blog this past week titled "Celebrate Citizen Science Month: Collaborate and Learn From Anywhere." The backyard BioBlitz will allow students to authentic citizen science safely. I can't talk today. The backyard BioBlitz will allow students to do authentic citizen science safely in their own backyard. Emphasis on species diversity, the students are encouraged to take a closer look at a different species right here in New Albany. Additionally, Sandy Reed led a one-hour webinar for science teachers across Ohio showcasing free teacher resources offered by National Geographic. Sandy shared resources that teachers K through 12 can use to plan science activities that are data-based using primary sources and future relevant current events. Some of the resources included professional development opportunities for teachers. The webinar was sponsored by SECO, Science Education Council of Ohio, and was required for teacher reference. And as a way to stay connected with her students and brighten their day, Melissa Mackey made yard signs with positive messages for students. She delivered one to each of her 46 students' homes while keeping with social distancing guidelines. As word got out, students were spying out their windows, waiting to catch their teacher in action. With parental permission, students took pictures of themselves with their signs and posted them on Instagram with pound Bush Mackey or hashtag Bush Mackey Team. Some of the pictures are being used in New Albany Intermediate Schools morning announcements. This year, there were 15 students that had 20 works of art juried into the Governor's Youth Art Exhibition. Due to the current circumstances, no work was able to be exhibited. However, many students across our school district were actually honored. And we will post through our communications department a link to actually see each student and the piece of artwork that was actually featured and will actually process that also for our newswire publication through the communications department to make sure our students and families also have access to the artwork electronically. That concludes the plea update.
Great, thank you. Discussion items tonight, any board liaison reports?
No.
Okay. With none, and I guess, Mr. Sawyers, this may be part of the other presentations you're going to be talking about, but is there anything that you want to say on the, I'm putting you on the spot here, the task force that we have with the COVID?
So the New Albany COVID-19 Task Force has continued to meet. They've actually given specific recommendations that will be incorporated into the presentations this evening. So I will make reference to those specifically about opportunities to finish the school year as well as we look towards summer 2020 and what that will mean for our students. But we remain appreciative of the professionalism of the persons participating from the medical field in particular, our first responders for the time that they also dedicate, as well as the city, the township, and obviously the school district, and the work that we're doing together to try to protect the safety and welfare of our entire community. So our focus has shifted dominantly from all school things since students have been required to be on remote learning to also talk about the greater good of the community and what else we can be doing to be stronger together. So I'll share a couple of specific examples of that during the presentations this evening.
Great, thank you. So then our first discussion item tonight is grading and reporting requirements.
So we'd like to begin this evening with Dr. Jessica Maimias. She's going to walk the Board of Education and our community through recommendations. Now that we know remote learning will continue for the duration of the school year, we'd like to explain our solution related to grading and reporting for the fourth quarter and what it will need for second semester grades overall. So Dr. Maimias, we'll begin with you.
Good evening, thank you for letting me the opportunity to share with you kind of the process that we went through in helping us determine the grading policy for fourth quarter with the changes. I'm going to present my screen. Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay. So this was, wasn't something that we took lightly. We took multiple things into consideration as we were looking at the grading for fourth quarter and impacts on our students. You know, just a reminder, we stand for student achievement, student growth, and student well-being. And so as we took these, looked at grading, we really wanted to maintain what we stand for. And we really believe that engaging in remote learning should not negatively impact our students' grade. So we're really, this idea of holding students harmless, that they didn't choose this, so we want to be cognizant of that. And our focus during this time remains on staying connected with students and providing balanced, engaging learning opportunities. You know, we recognize that learning does not replace face-to-face instruction and that the students receive in the classroom and that the impact of the shift to remote learning of the classroom environment affects everything, the teaching, the learning, the family environment, family circumstances, so, social and emotional wellness. And so this transition has been hard for all, and when we take into consideration the grades, we want to look at the entire picture. So when you look at surrounding districts, there are really two kind of models that districts have taken in terms of grading. There's the pass and, let me step back a minute. When we were looking at these two, and we keep in mind that we engage in the remote learning should not negatively impact our students, we're going to hold them harmless. We need to consider the effect of the current school year, but look at potential long-term effects on GPA. We currently have sixth, seventh, and eighth graders that are taking high school credit, so it was important to keep in mind the long-term impact of adjusting our grading during this time. In addition, O H S A has provided guidance for future athletic participation on athletic eligibility for the class of 2020 and all students participating in high school sports. But in particular, N C 2 A has provided guidance on athletic eligibility for the class of 2020 that still includes a GPA component. But they have clearly stated that there may not be any additional modifications to criteria for future graduating classes. So we need to keep the short-term and the long-term effect as we made our consideration of the grades. And I started saying, there are two kind of grading philosophies across central Ohio. There's a pass incomplete. Dublin, Gehanna, and Worthington have gone to a similar system. It's a student earns a pass or they're incomplete with different varying effects on the GPA. There are traditional grades such as Grandview, Hudson, Hilliard, and Upper Arlington. They use a traditional grading system, some varying, where they, a student could choose to do pass incomplete. So in Upper Arlington, a student has a choice at the end of the quarter to determine whether to keep a pass or the traditional grade. But again, we have to look at our students and the long-term impact. When we were making our decision, we really took a look at how our students are engaging in the process right now. When we look, our current engagement is 96% of our students are logging in at the high school compared to a 92% attendance typical on a given day during face-to-face traditional instruction. At the middle school, we're averaging 99% compared to a 94% when we're in face-to-face. So our students are continuing to engage in the learning, and so we really wanted to honor that. So as we chose and looking at the traditional grades for us, we wanted to make sure that the students, the daily work that students are doing is being honored because students are continuing to learn throughout this process. So as we looked at our two, we really looked at traditional grades, but how is that going to impact our students? So this is the proposed model that we have for the high school and the middle school. Again, we want to hold students harmless. If a student earns a fourth quarter grade that is higher than or equal to his or her third quarter grade, the student will earn the higher grade. Okay? So if they do better fourth quarter, great, it's going to help them. If an engaged student participating in completing 70% of assignments earns a fourth quarter grade that is lower than her or her third quarter grade, then the teacher will adjust the fourth quarter grade to equal the third quarter. So again, if a student is engaging, they're going to maintain their third quarter grade and we're going to use that as the fourth quarter. If a student does not engage and does not complete 70% of their assignments, then the student will be assigned the grade that they have earned for the fourth quarter. I pull attendance and what I call engagement reports for every building on Monday mornings, and students are participating, students are engaging. And if we have a student that isn't, it might be one or two per building, maybe more, we are reaching out and we have had those contacts and reaching out and saying, what additional supports can we help provide you to get them to engage? And then lastly, seniors who did not engage in assignment completion at all risk not meeting graduation requirements. The final determination of a senior meeting or not meeting graduation requirements will be the responsibility of the building principal. So overall, we need to look at the weighting of the grades. Currently, the top calculation, we hold quarter three and quarter four and exam two as what's called a 2020/10. The semester two grade is made up of 20% quarter three, 20% quarter four, and 10% exam, second semester exam. At the part of remote learning, we made a decision, the secondary team made a decision to remove exam two grades. So really, where does that 10% fall? And this idea of the traditional grades, holding students harmless, we split that 10% over quarter three and quarter four. So quarter three and quarter four grades are at the same weight. It is a similar, slightly different at the middle school when you look at semester one grades, but again, quarter three, quarter four is their overall split for the semester two grade for weighting. For the intermediate, we kind of stair-stepped our way down. If this was our requirement that we were using at the middle school and the high school, how could we transition that to the intermediate? So again, we kind of held this harmless. If a student earns a third semester grade that is higher than or equal to his or her second semester grade, the student will earn the higher grade. Again, if a student is engaged at 70%, but scores lower, then their third trimester grade will equal their second. And if a student does not engage by completing 70% of the assignments, then the student will be assigned a designation of incomplete. So intermediate grades, sixth graders that are taking high school courses will follow the middle school, high school grading, but any intermediate student that doesn't meet this engagement, they will get an incomplete, and the principal will discuss those learning expectations with the student's parents. So it's kind of this middle ground. There's not a, we're not going to fail you or give you a grade, but we're going to help support you to engage in the learning process. And then we stair-stepped that back a little bit further for E L C and primary. Students with parent supports are expected to participate in learning opportunities being provided through School G to be considered engaged. Students who are engaged will receive a mark of satisfactory, and is the current practice standards not addressed during the third semester will not receive a mark. And where their evidence does not exist of work completion during the school closure, a designation of incomplete will be used. If a student receives a designation of incomplete, again, the principal will discuss those learning expectations with the student's parents. The whole premise of this was really to engage, remember that our students are engaging. How can we support them with all of these changes? No one asked for this, so what can we do to help support them when we look at those short-term and those potential long-term effects on the GPA for the middle school and the high school?
So I would add from the district perspective that as the administrative team, as Dr. Maimias had indicated, our focus was trying to go back to support the statement of purpose and looking at the developmental and academic needs of kids across the school district to determine what is age-appropriate, particularly at the secondary level for the impact of what grading and reporting has for the long-term for students in relationship to N C A A eligibility for future scholastic eligibility for collegiate athletics, O H S A requirements and/or the GPA requirements that have a scholarship impact. So we did assess and weigh all the options and came back to what we felt to be a fair and equitable way to actually engage kids and hold them still accountable for the learning that's taking place from a remote perspective, but at the same time, create some flexibility in that not every kid is achieving or succeeding at the same level as what they perhaps could be if they're actually in classrooms face-to-face with teachers. However, with that said, there are some students that are thriving within this environment because they're not going to school in a traditional way. They're not here from 7:50 quote-unquote to 2:50 to be here before the eight o'clock bell and go home at 2:50. Honestly, the trend still at the secondary level at the high school is we're starting school somewhere between 10 and 11 in the morning because we're sleeping in, similar at the middle school, and then doing school for four to five hours on average across the middle school and high school. So that flexibility is actually working for many students in a different way remotely. We're also trying to be conscious and cognizant, and you'll hear us talk about this in the parent survey responses, of the impact that student learning is having within a working household. And the challenges that that's created, depending on the age of the student, and what we're trying to do to be conscious of how it's impacting the overall family unit as well as the student individually from a mental health perspective. And there's a wide range of those responses that we receive from students across the school district as well as their parents. So we believe that the resolution that's going to appear later on the agenda this evening to basically modify grading and reporting, as just outlined by Dr. Maimias, gives us the flexibility necessary to account for the teaching and learning that we would hold students accountable for during this phase of remote learning for COVID-19 1.0 for the current school year for 2019, 2020. Happy to answer any additional questions. And if they're building specific, we also have principals available to answer a specific question at a specific level related to grading and reporting if you have such.
So I'll ask a question. So the, you mentioned that we have pretty high engagement on a daily basis. So the 70% number that we're at, are we expecting pretty much everybody's going to hit that? Or is that really, is there a concern that people may drop off as, if they felt that there wasn't going to be any other consequence?
So for clarification, it's not 70% attendance, it's 70% engagement and also completion of work. So it's not just about logging into School G, we also have to be responsible for the learning that I'm required to document and provide to the classroom teacher. So, and 70% is the threshold we established just because the variance across all the grade levels and what we're seeing for students because what takes John two hours to do for a specific class might take me four hours. So we're trying to be conscious of the fact that learning is not a one-size-fits-all, even in a remote-based experience, just like it is at coming to school every single day. And we're trying to differentiate to help kids be successful, but be reasonable at the same time that if you are actively engaging and trying all your best to do the work and you're reaching out for the office hours, the additional support that's being provided by classroom teachers, the math lessons that are being taught by principals, the literacy units that are being taught by administrators, then we're making sure that you're actively engaged. So we're trying to set a threshold that is achievable, but yet accountable.
And I'm guessing that there's probably the thinking behind the going from the third quarter to the fourth quarter and trying to hold harmless, right, based on this change that we've got. Are we seeing situations where you've got an A student who's all of a sudden now a C or D student? Or are we just talking about maybe, you know, kind of someone's teetering on the edge of A, B, or B, C, and we're just trying to keep it fair?
I think it's a both conversation. Part of the issue is some students may just not have completed the work or submitted it to their classroom teacher to go through the grading process. So that could be a situation where currently the grade looks lower. But in several cases, some kids are actually performing better because they have a different structured environment that they're in control of their online learning and doing what they want to do at their pace versus what specifically the pace is. So most of the assignments at the secondary level have been assigned in blocks of time. We've called them chunks. You've heard us talk about the learning chunks and the assignment chunks that would be required for each phase. We're about to approach Phase Three, beginning Monday, May 4th at the secondary level. So there'll be another chunk of time to get us to the end of the school year with X number of lessons and assignments that'll be required for students to complete.
Anybody have any other questions?
I love that we can, we can track engagement and we can, we can track how well students are participating, and I think it's a, it's a really well-thought-out plan. I'm not surprised frankly, but.
I would probably as well, I think it's a well-thought-out plan. I think the 70% seems rational in terms of engagement. I guess I would only just caveat that, I know that the team is working on this in light of some of the parent feedback that the denominator might be different for some grade levels, some grades, some classrooms where we're hearing of families where Johnny might have an hour and a half worth of work and Jane might have six or seven. So 70% of an hour and a half might be viewed as not aggressive enough for Johnny. So I think that's, that's the only caveat, I would put that on that because I think somebody might say 70%, wow, it's really not aggressive right now as I think it could be for my child. And I realize we're getting feedback across the board, but have asked for that on a grade level and building level basis, so that would be my only concern. And the more we can manage that as a leadership team from classroom to classroom and grade level to grade level, hopefully that'll smooth out some of those denominator fluctuations. That's all.
Mike or Debbie, any questions?
No, I think, you know, I would just echo what Phil said, I think it's a very thoughtful, creative solution. You know, Michael, you described, you know, both ends of the spectrum. I can say with my four kids, we're kind of both sides of the spectrum. So, you know, this has been really, I think it's a well-received approach. I know that it immediately reduced a lot of anxiety in my house and I'm sure it will help students and parents out there in the district. And I think that that's really important when we think about, as Mr. Maimias said, nobody asks for this. It's hard enough to navigate through school as it is and now they're trying to figure out how to learn remotely. You know, this is a lot for our students. So I think, you know, taking that stress off of them, thinking about their mental well-being while still being very practical and rational, holding some high standards type of solution.
I agree, I think it's a really well-thought-out plan. I like that there's steps for the different age groups and I think it rewards kids who are excelling right now. And I like the philosophy of it also, holding harmless kids that may be struggling more right now. So I, I think it's really, really good. And, you know, one of my concerns about grading was the long-term implications for people who are taking, students who are taking high school-level classes, and I think you guys have thought of everything. So I'm really pleased with it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks so much. Next item then is the parent survey results.
So as the Board of Education knows, we conducted a parent survey related to remote learning. Our goal is to try to continuously receive feedback and input on what's working, what's not, and how can we improve, especially knowing that there was likelihood of the potential of remote learning to continue through the end of the school year. And the second chunk of time for Phase Two was coming to a close. And as we start to ramp up for Phase Three, wanted to understand from a parent's perspective and conversations with their student, what specifically was working in our current efforts and how we can ultimately improve to better meet the needs of the students and/or the family unit, using Paul's specific example, and you'll see that as we go through the survey results, of what we can do to differentiate and improve upon the reality of meeting everyone's needs in a balanced way. And that's one of the things we're going to talk about at great length, is the balanced approach that we're trying to implement as a school district to meet the needs of everyone rather than people on opposite ends of the spectrum. So we're going to talk about that as we go through the survey results. But we do want to publicly report, we're very grateful that our families took the opportunity to provide feedback, in some cases more than once, because you have multiple kids in our school district, so you answered the questions based upon each individual building experience so that we can use the data with the building principals and our classroom teachers to directly understand feedback for that specific student without names, it's all anonymous, but that we can actually learn from as we look towards Phase Three to get us from Monday, May 4th through the end of the school year. So Dr. Maimias is going to start, and I'm going to interject as we go through the presentation on some specific points that we want to make sure that are understood for the work that's going on and how we're going to try to incorporate the feedback that we receive into improvement for Phase Three to get us to the end of the 2019, 2020 school year. So Dr. Maimias.
So this was a pretty short survey in times, in terms of when it was available for parents. We sent it out last Monday and the survey closed last night. In that short period of time, we did have just over 1,400 responses. And as Mr. Sawyer stated, this could be a combination, a parent may have responded multiple times. So while we know we have over 5,000 families, this is just a combination of a small portion of the community. It's about 28%. If you look at the survey, in terms of respondents and the schools, we have a good representation across all five buildings. So one of the things, some of the feedback that we've received is the amount of work, how much time students are spending on instruction. We kind of broke it down. We kind of broke it down and asked, um, how much time were your students spending on um, remote learning every day? Ranging from um, one hour to less, two to three, four to five, six to seven, or eight or more hours. Across the district, um, forty seven percent of our students are spending two to three hours on the remote instruction. If you break this down by building though, um, especially at the high school, the greatest percentage is within that four to five hours. Um, at the middle school and the intermediate, um, that four to five and that two to three are kind of um, roughly the same amount um, in terms of breakdown. So again, there's some nuances within the buildings, but just recognizing that those expectations are changing. When you, especially when you look at a high school student that is taking five, six classes, they would be spending more time um, on their instruction.
Jess, can we pause here for a second?
Yep.
So for our parents at home that are going to see this presentation, um, one of the things that we would ask you to do, if you are one of the parents where your child is spending one hour or less per day, or you are a parent where your child's spending eight or more hours, you need to contact your building administrator and your classroom teachers for conversation. There is no expectation from the administration that our students should be less than one hour or spending eight hours per day. We tried to build a system that on average is three to four hours per day that's developmentally appropriate. Um, and again, as Dr. Mias said, dominantly at the secondary level. But if you have a student that's spending sixty to ninety minutes per day and and they are fulfilling those expectations and completing all the work that's assigned, then we need to provide some enrichment opportunities, just like we would at school. So we can differentiate learning opportunities for students to provide enrichment if necessary. If your student is spending six to eight hours per day, then we need to have a conversation to investigate and confirm the amount of work that's being provided because that student may be struggling within an online environment. We should be making learning accommodations just like we would do at school to have conversations to differentiate to best meet the needs of that child. So that child is probably completely stressed out, full of anxiety, and having perhaps mental health issues that we need to support differently. So our school counselors, our mental health specialists and our prevention clinicians and the administration absolutely want to work with those parents. So if you need support, please contact your classroom teachers and your building administrator. Um, we are happy to provide you with assistance because we do not want the students to be that stressed out. And it could be just the remote learning environment because learning online is not the same as face to face. And we've all talked about that. So some of our students are absolutely rock stars. They're doing a great job and they're thriving within an online environment. However, we also know from the parent feedback and the very specific examples that there are some students that are completely stressed out about the workload and how this means for how it looks for them to learn in this type of an environment. So we absolutely want to be conscious of that and encourage families to please contact us. We have the month of May to go and we do not want this situation to continue for any child that may be struggling or need additional supports. We are here to help you and we will find solutions.
And at this time, we asked about whether they felt that the student had was the right amount of work. So if you can see, you can see that sixty percent of the respondents said, yes, my student is getting the right amount of work. But there is roughly twenty percent that is saying, my student's not getting enough. And another twenty percent roughly that is saying, hold on, this is way too much. It is definitely um, a range of um, parent feedback. When we got to the open ended responses, um, the there was, we have to pay attention to the fact that there are two working parents in the home trying to help educate and to help support a first grader. And so sometimes um, within the feedback, it comes across it, it's just a little bit too much. But on the other hand, um, you, we had some parents who were saying, look, my student is going too fast. And as Mr. Sawyer said, we can work with both of those, but we definitely have a range within the district of how they feel that the work that's being assigned um, is right um, or on the, on either end. So we've chosen to use Schoology um, kind of as our our platform across the district. And so we asked the question, have you been able to consistently um, access Schoology? And while ninety three percent of our students have consistently been able to access it, of the seven percent, they were then asked, what was the reason? Was it a a device issue, access to internet or other? And then they were able to write in what they had. Of the seven percent, it really fell down into the other category. Schoology links not working, um, the structure organization, they didn't understand the structure organization within the Schoology. Understanding the difference of when within Schoology, use the app, the browser. And so those are all um, items that we've been working on. When you look, even myself, I was going into a um, a teacher's course to help them um, with an organization and I clicked on a link and I got a frowny face. But if I clicked on the link above, it took me exactly where I needed to go. So it's learning. Um, I think our teachers are learning the best way to upload that data into Schoology. And so we'll use that feedback to continue to work towards um, creating better organization structures within the system.
Jess, just a second.
Yeah.
The other point I want to make is that Schoology is not just being used in the Albany Plain Local School District. It's being used throughout the United States and potentially across the world. It is one of the learning management systems. It's available to school districts that we do purchase and subscribe to. There are multiple vendors and different types of options for learning management systems that we can use um, to cultivate a curriculum requirement and everything that we do within the learning based environment for kids. But Schoology is a tool. It is still technology. And I will be honest and tell you that we've received numerous reports and it's been better. But there were times the system just simply crashed because it was being overused. Um, and it's not because of New Albany students, it's because of the entire United States and a pandemic called coronavirus. So with that reality, and this is where the flexibility came into play, our middle school and high school kids kind of self volunteered to say, I would love not to have to be on at eight o'clock in the morning on Schoology. Can I come on at ten and work till four or something at eleven and work till three? Depending on how many hours of work I had to do, because it also relieved the Schoology system and actually helped um, decrease traffic within Schoology. So since kids have created some flexibility, Schoology's actually improved in the overall structure of operations. So just know that it's not just a New Albany issue, it's an issue throughout the United States and the world because Schoology is a learning management system used by many.
I first, I want to explain a couple of these graphs. Um, I am piloting a, for this survey, I piloted a new system. And so I'm currently using the free version. So um, I asked varying questions. It was the same question, but the wording was different based upon if it was a K through three, um, preschool, pre-K through three or four through twelve. So the red and the the purple on these graphs are just a representation of which question they got, but it's in essence the same question. So as we go through these, that's why I have stacked red and purple graphs on here. So this first one, um, my student knows how to contact their teacher for helping with completing assignments. Really just looking at communication, um, are they reaching out to their teachers? Do they know how to reach out to teachers? And as you see, as we go through these um, questions uh, on the survey, we do have a majority positive within the strong, within the somewhat agree and strongly agree. So we are communicating, we we are having our students know um, how to reach out to their teachers through this remote learning. My students' teachers are responsive to my my questions about my students' schoolwork or um, my teachers are responsive to my students' questions about schoolwork. So again, you know, we're using um, pre-K through three, really the parents are the ones that are helping the students log in. So the wording of the questions were slightly different. But again, we see that there is a um, strong agreement that um, our teachers that um, in returns to questions are being um, responsive to students and parents um, that reach out. My my student receives enough guidance. As you can see, we have a little bit more in the somewhat disagree. I would say in the parent feedback, um, when we did the open ended responses, some of the the themes that you can see is just understanding Schoology. How do you, how do you go from a face to face instruction to an online instruction? And how do I, what do I use? Where do I go within the system? To kind of work through that process. So it's definitely been a learning curve for students and I would say for teachers as they start to adjust to um, having to do additional instruction because they don't have that face to face um, consistently.
Jess, can we pause here for a second, please? So I'm going to talk a little bit more about this because it's overwhelming the area that we've had conversations about from a leadership perspective based upon the parent responses. And most of it goes back to a synchronous versus asynchronous learning based environment that's available for students for supports. So um, there's all kinds of information out there and we've had some very specific emails sent to us about um, a teacher in another school district, a teacher in another state, um, my niece is doing this, my uncle's doing that, and their classroom teachers. And I'll go back to where Dr. Mias um, just mentioned that this is a new learning environment, not just for students, but also for classroom teachers. So during the first phase, we basically directed teachers, not knowing if this would continue or not continue. But when we actually jumped into this on March sixteenth, thinking that was for a period of fourteen days, um, asked teachers to take their traditional learning environment and digitize it to make it accessible to kids for remote learning electronically. And as phase one continued, more and more information became available and school districts were experimenting. And there's school districts here in central Ohio. And I've talked to every superintendent in central Ohio about what they specifically tried and what did or didn't work and how they had to regroup, reconvene and change their path. Because parents and students um, were honestly overwhelmed um, and frustrated because of technology. So most during the first phase of one ended up doing what we did was basically to digitize curriculum and make it accessible for the first fourteen days of the pandemic, not knowing what the outcome was going to be for return to school. Then phase two came and we were told that school cannot resume and we had to learn from phase one to understand, okay, this is working for some people, but it's frustrating others. We still have some students that need more face to face contact with teachers. Um, we continue to work with the Plain Local Education Association and our classroom teachers to talk about um, using Schoology Conference and using Google Hangouts and using video um, to actually post for students and families, um, particularly for younger families that have working parents in the household, that also emailed us and said, listen, I have to work. So I can't do school in the normal way either. So I know you created flexibility for high school and middle school kids. I need some flexibility at the elementary level too. Can you request a teacher start doing some videos? So we learned from that feedback and actually started to create videos that could get posted through Schoology that families could also use. So we also listened to families saying, but that's not enough for my child. My child needs that one on one contact or small group um, developmental contact with their classroom teachers. Can we also strongly encourage that we continue to build our capacity and relationship to using Schoology Conference or using Google Hangouts? Um, that's also when there was some conversation that started from a national perspective about about Zoom or no Zoom. And it's what I finally call it. So we chose not to go the Zoom route because there were specific things related to Zoom that did not fulfill the FERPA requirements for privacy purposes for students. So we already had an established framework through Schoology Conference that we purchased because we buy Schoology subscription for a learning management system. And we use Google Hangouts because it's free. So we took that structure and then continue to provide opportunities to teach teachers how to use that in a more robust way. And it is looking different, going back to students are learning and teachers are learning simultaneously across our school district to try to support what this is going to look like for phase three. So we realized to date that it has not been perfect. We had no expectation it was going to be perfect. We just want to be honest and transparent that we understand your feedback. And we will use the survey comments specifically in this section about what we can do to further improve phase three for the last portion of May, from May fourth really to the end of the school year, to help our teachers become more successful than they already are in the remote based learning experience to continue to differentiate, just like we would expect within a daily environment within the classroom, also online to the best of their ability to meet the needs of kids. The one piece I want to make absolutely clear, and it's really across all of central Ohio and really honestly, probably most of the state from the conversations that I have with superintendents on our weekly calls across the state of Ohio, is that there are no school districts that I've yet to talk to where an entire classroom is actively participating in a virtual learning environment for synchronous learning. It is being done in small groups and our teachers are doing that today. So there could be one, three or five students that pull up to a teacher in a Google Hangout that gets scheduled with the parent, if necessary, based upon the age or one on one with a student to actually go through with that teacher a specific standard related to learning to help that student become successful. So although we're not doing it in a large group environment, we are doing it in small groups at the elementary, middle school and high school level. And then the same thing is also happening for some students at the secondary level through this thing called office hours. Our elementary teachers are available, as are our secondary teachers, between eight o'clock and three thirty every single day. But the secondary teachers also publish office hours. And you're going to see in just a couple of slides, that Dr. Mias is going to tell you, many parents in our school district are telling us, we're not participating in office hours. We would strongly encourage families that if your child needs additional support, the face to face interaction and the small group learning opportunities with teachers, you should be contacting them through office hours to try to talk about what else can be done to meet the individual needs of my child. Both from a differentiation standpoint to challenge and enrich them if they don't have enough to do, or from your perspective as a parent, you don't believe they have enough to do, or the student again is feeling overwhelmed. We are listening. We will take the feedback that was specifically provided in this question and unpack it to improve the third phase to the best of our ability between now and the end of the school year. But please know, our teachers are learning just as much as our kids because we all were thrust into an online world. And honestly, our pedagogy that we learned as teachers wasn't necessarily within an online environment. So we're trying to turn it into that. So we've gone from digitized from phase one to a new opportunity in phase two that we've learned from, where we started to experiment with these tools to see how we can further improve in phase three. But everyone is working hard and I absolutely want everyone to know, we appreciate everything you're doing at home. But we will listen to your responses in this question to figure out what else we can do to better support students during phase three.
So in addition to access um, the the learning, we also wanted to check in on how were students adjusting to learning from home? Um, checking in on that social emotional wellness. And as you can see, this one's a little bit more um, spread out compared to the others. We still have some that have figured out how to do the remote learning, have transitioned well. And we still have in this survey, close to between three and four hundred that haven't. And so we need to continue to work out and reach out to those students to help them with this transition. With that in mind, we also asked if parents and students knew that school counselors, um, our social workers, our prevention clinicians um, through Concord were available to them. Again, the majority um, knew that these were, these resources were available. But we still have a small portion um, in the survey that did not realize that these resources were available. We have our counselors are have set up the one to ones, um, they have been doing Google meets. And so they're there available. Um, it's just, we need to continue to remind students and to parents that these resources are available to them through the school district. So these next two questions were specific to the high school and the middle school. They were directed um, in regards to how much support. So compared to support that we did in a face to face instruction, how much support are um, parents um, providing to their students in in this remote learning? As you can see, um, out of the roughly six hundred responses, a third of them are providing additional support, um, just helping with the organization, helping um, students um, with their learning. just helping with the organization, helping students with their learning at the middle school and the high school.
Jess, can we pause here for a second? So I want to go back to the organization piece because this is also an overwhelming area that was responded to for parent commentary specifically within the survey itself and how we're actually giving students the organization of their weekly assignments. So the feedback overwhelmingly says that we've created some frustration because we don't have a uniform way of actually communicating the weekly assignments through SchoolAgie. So we are discussing that as a school district for Phase Three and are committed to supporting our families to improve upon how we're organizing the work, the schoolwork that's specifically assigned to students so that it's not just through emails from perhaps 16 different teachers to a student that may be interacting, that he or she may be interacting with potentially at the secondary level. So we are conscious of that. That was an overwhelming response, both from students as well as from parents, just in emails I've also received from students that we are working on. So we want to be transparent about the fact that we have heard you and we will work on that for Phase Three to further improve how we're communicating with you about student assignments.
And the last middle school, high school only question was asking about the office hours. How often is your student participating, logging into those? And as Mr. Sawyer has stated earlier, you can see that the majority of the students from this survey were not logging into those office hours. And so just the ongoing support and continued encouragement of students to log in when they need that additional time. So in the feedback, there were three major themes that I would talk about in terms of the open responses. The first is the student-teacher interactions. As educators, we came into, we chose to be an educator because of the relationships first and foremost. We are as much about our relationships as we are and our content takes a backseat to those relationships. And so we're all earning to keep those relationships strong. And it came through loud and clear through the feedback that our students are missing our teachers, our students are missing that face-to-face instruction. They are missing the interaction and that relationship piece. In this one quote, just beneath the box, you know, when I asked my senior what he missed about in-person learning, he said the back and forth, the banter, the laughs with students and teachers. So it's that interaction piece. It's not so, yes, we want that content, we're used to that content, but it's those interactions. And it's, our parents and our students want more touchpoints with their teachers. And so that came through loud and clear through all of the feedback. And there were some parents within the feedback that gave, that were ecstatic about the structure and how their teacher was reaching out to them. But there was definitely a need for increased student-teacher interactions. By far, that was the, I would say, this new program can kind of look at the written responses and about 40% of our feedback had something to do with student and teacher interactions. The next closest one is what I called consistent expectations and only 17% of the parent feedback came in this one. So student-teacher interactions was definitely the highest. But that consistent expectations, as Mr. Sawyer has already talked about, looking at not different expectations between teachers, but looking within the SchoolAgie and the organization and where to go find things. And do I have to go click five times for this teacher or is it right on their front page? So that expectations of that organization within SchoolAgie. And also, we talked about this in the one slide about the workload. There is definitely a varying workload. Some teachers are saying it's more busy work, so just looking at that overall structure within SchoolAgie. And lastly, is just the adjusting to remote learning. It is a hard transition. We want those face-to-face interactions and this adjustment to learning from home is, has been difficult. And as we said, some have transitioned well, but it is a change for all. And so when we look at these three themes, some of these quotes, the feedback that I put on here were a good example of what's going on within the feedback and what we can use to move forward. Do you want to add anything, Michael?
No, I'm going to transition to the principals, please.
Okay.
So one of the things that I think is important, and again, for parent purposes, we're going to go through and we've read every note and everything that's been provided by the survey. And it'll get disaggregated by the building level and the building principals will work with their classroom teachers for continuous improvement as we look towards Phase Three. But for tonight, I also thought it would be beneficial for the frontline, our building principals to share a success story and an opportunity that they see based upon being thrust into this environment. Because not only have the students and teachers been learning, our building administrators and really the entire administrative team has been learning. So I think it's important to understand from the frontline of their perspective, what's working from their idea and what else we can do to continuously improve, just to give you frontline perspective. So let's start with Ms. Unger for the Early Learning Center, please.
Thank you Superintendent Sawyer. Good evening, everyone. I would like to highlight the staff. I think I am most impressed with the ELC staff and the way they came together and quickly adjusted to the new norm. They have been very collaborative, really touching on everybody's strengths to create a daily lesson for each student. And we release those lessons each Monday for the week. So we have been communicating to families that we understand what it's like to have to balance life so that they could work at their own pace. And we continually provide opportunities for students to interact with teachers. So as well as the specialists and some of those supports that students are used to having throughout the week. So English language, intervention, reading support. So I just, for the celebration, I just want to celebrate the ELC staff and that they quickly adjusted and we're continuing to learn. So, you know, we are listening to the parents' feedback, we are adjusting, we've adjusted throughout this time. Every couple of weeks, we think about different ways to reach students and adjust our, what we're doing is basically PowerPoints each day that walk through videos of the teachers reading or read aloud because that's what our kids are used to. And we've also looked at it as an opportunity for families to learn from teachers on how they present lessons within the classroom. So the staff has been great. We're continuing to adjust and figure out ways to better connect with our students and families. So those are kind of our successes and our learning opportunities now are kind of to really dig into the parent feedback and figure out additional ways that we can learn and tweak the learning for the last chunk of time.
Thank you, Michelle. Teresa Smith, primary school. Teresa, you're muted.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. Sorry about that. Our success story is the staff's ability to adjust and adapt with the implementation of SchoolAgie as the learning platform. There was a learning curve for us since we were not using it at the primary school. Since we've started, we've all participated in online SchoolAgie training. We've done some PD sessions with different resources like NearPod, which we definitely integrate into SchoolAgie for some of our lessons. There has been an aligned collaboration among each grade level. The related arts staff have worked together, intervention specialists, and the academic support team working together to create content across all grade levels. Moving forward, I think our challenge and area of continued work will be expectations focused on student workload. We will need to keep refining to find that balance that provides enrichment and intervention to meet the needs of all of our students. And finally, I would say that we want to continue the relationship building that is so much an integral part of the primary school learning community. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Next, Katie Nowak, intermediate school principal, please.
Good evening. With the one-to-one initiative at New Albany Intermediate, we have been able to use the Common Learning Platform, consistent software, provide feedback to our students. And in collaboration and support from Mr. Voss and our technology coaches, we continue to build upon our learning opportunities using interactive tech, technology tools such as NearPod and EdPuzzle. Our staff has been working really hard, engaged in ongoing technology professional development, and we continue to collaborate and adjust and adapt. While most of our fifth and sixth grade students are very proficient with SchoolAgie and using their iPad from taking it home on a daily basis, there has been a learning curve for fourth grade. We will continue to support, to learn and grow, and are striving to get better every day. I would say an opportunity for moving forward is to continue to use our technology tools to increase opportunities for meaningful interactions between teachers and students. As Mrs. Smith said, that connection and relationship piece is so key.
Great, thank you, Katie. Donna LeBeau, middle school, please.
So I'm going to shout out the 99% of my middle school students who are getting to learn every single day. I appreciate that very, very much. And that is because of the 84% of my teachers who have mandatory Google Meets or office hours. Because like the children, they need to see that face-to-face. 42% of our teachers have live lessons or discussions. I was fortunate enough to get to conduct Patty Randall's when she was out ill one day. And then 70% of our teachers use online recordings. The one thing that that 84% did to us was created an area of improvement, was to create some angst around kids with competing Google Meets or mandatory sessions. And so we always give kids the benefit of the doubt. That's what's happening in online learning. But we have created a huge Google Doc that has all of our online, or all our mandatory Google Meets on there. And so teachers know when to schedule so as not to hurt another child. We hear parents and students say, hey, I can't do all of these. And so we've backed off a little bit.
Thank you, Donna. Ken Kramer, high school.
Good evening, everyone. I would also like to recognize the high school staff. I think the transition that occurred very quickly in, you know, classes that we have, you know, 125 kids in and trying to figure out how to digitize lessons that you already planned for. They've done an extremely positive, student-first approach on how to create lessons. I think we continue to battle what high expectations look like with online learning. A lot of people created digital lessons based on what they were going to do and continue to plan for things like our AP tests or the next year, doing the essential things that they know they need to do, but trying to figure out how to present that in an online format. I think we've done a great job collaborating. And can we continue to work through this from Phase One to Phase Two? We actually went from minimums to maximums because we saw that our teachers were assigning so much and trying to hold that standard. And they've responded very, very well to that and have since hit the maximums or a little bit less than that. And we still continue to refine that. Specifically to an area for improvement moving forward and what we'll look at for Phase Three is, I think, a misstep that we had was calling it office hours at the high school because the high school already had office hours three times a week in the morning from 7:30 to 8:00. And those are optional. So in a student's mind, right out of the gate, an office hour is optional. And we presented office hours as the opportunity to get that live instruction, but that wasn't communicated clearly with students or with parents. And the term office hours was linked to voluntary. According to our data, 36% of the high school staff are offering live lessons. But as you can see from the survey data, we have less than 10 students attending each of those, with only one of our teachers, Mr. Hillbrands, in EP Government requiring mandatory live lessons. So that's an area for improvement at the high school.
Thank you, Ken. So clearly, Board of Education and really our parents at home, you can see that we've had great success to date. It's been a learning opportunity to implement remote learning through Phase One and Phase Two, but we are committed to improving for Phase Three. But the additional information will be coming out to families as we, again, we are digesting this survey data. We are taking it very seriously and we will implement plans that show continuous improvement for Phase Three to try to help relieve some of the stress and anxiety that is clearly documented and demonstrated through the survey results. But at the same time, also work with families to ensure that we give access to the social emotional learning supports that may be needed for guidance counselors, mental health specialists, prevention clinicians, as well as the differentiation within the curriculum specifically to help students that might be underwhelmed or overwhelmed or just about right from the feedback that we've actually received in the survey data. So as we look towards the end of the school year, Jess, can we continue, please? So as we look towards the end of the school year, we want to connect some dots based upon the questions we continue to receive and what this means for getting through Phase Three based upon the conversations within the leadership team. So first and foremost, I'm going to start with our seniors, the class of 2020. And clearly, this has been a senior year like no other in the history of time for students that are graduating from high school. No other senior class has been exposed to what this senior class has and the roller coaster ride that they've been on for COVID-19. So to that end, tonight, we will publicly announce and tomorrow, we will communicate to our seniors and our families, that daily instruction for seniors will continue through Friday, May 15th, 2020. There are no final exams and I previously announced that with the exception for College Credit Plus, if applicable. So for students that are participating in College Credit Plus courses through colleges or universities, they must adhere to the final exam schedules produced by that respective institution of higher education. The New Albany Plain Local School District final exams have been canceled. Tomorrow night, we have our first opportunity for the alphabetical cap-and-gown drive-through distribution. So Mr. Kramer and the senior team have put together very strict requirements of how we're going to maintain social distancing and alphabetically distribute to nearly 400 students the caps and gowns that would be required for participation in our virtual graduation that the high school is currently planning. Seniors will actually be scheduled again for another drive-through opportunity to pick up the remaining student belongings that we are collecting from our classrooms and art studios and music rooms across our campus specifically for seniors and also give them an opportunity to bring back their library books, their textbooks, or Chromebooks if they borrowed one for the remote learning environments, to officially check out and verify that they are eligible for graduation. Mr. Kramer and the senior team and his administrative team at the high school will be planning that for the week following the last day of seniors just before graduation, most likely somewhere between Tuesday, May 19th and Thursday, May 21st. Our goal is that by the afternoon of Thursday, the 21st, we have successfully checked out and done the final audits necessary to permit us to actually confer diplomas on Saturday that week. The senior team and the high school administration are planning the virtual celebration for our seniors. We recognize that many of the year-end activities, they are not able to participate in with the closure of school continuing. So we are trying to come up with new, creative, and innovative ways to celebrate them virtually. And the high school senior team, as well as the administration, will continue to communicate that specifically with our families. We will certify for virtual graduation, the class of 2020. We have scheduled and we are maintaining our original graduation date of Saturday, May 23rd, 2020 for the class of 2020. The other piece of news that I unfortunately have to share this evening is that we did receive official communication from the Ohio Department of Education, basically telling all school districts in the state of Ohio that all students in the class of 2020 shall graduate virtually, that the idea of holding potential face-to-face dates for July and August are unrealistic. And based upon the current requirements for health orders, students for the class of 2020 will likely only graduate virtually. There will be no face-to-face graduation ceremonies permitted based upon the current orders that have been received. And lastly, we will always communicate more to our seniors and to our families as we continue to get updates. If any of the information changes and it gives us other opportunities to do more for our senior class, we absolutely will because clearly, our seniors are being impacted like no other class before them. We also care about our underclassmen. So again, planning for the end of the school year for students in pre-K through grade 11, our daily instruction will continue through Friday, May 22nd. So our last day of regular instruction by classroom teachers will be Friday, May 22nd. There will be no final exams, again, for any underclassmen, dominantly at the secondary level for high school credit, with the exception of students participating in College Credit Plus, again. We are preparing, again, as I had mentioned, for the seniors, and this one is much more complicated than just the senior class, for a drive-through and pickup and drop-off event for our students and then their parents. We're going to schedule them to come back to We're going to schedule them to come back to the school campus to pick up the remaining student belongings, to drop off library books. There's nearly 1,500 library books that are currently checked out from the school district that we hope to have returned to us for future use, textbooks, and then in some very specific grade levels, the return of technology. We will not collect all of the iPads that have been issued. There are a few grade levels that are impacted, but the majority of the technology will remain distributed. But there are a few classes that we specifically need some technology devices back from. We're currently planning to do that Tuesday, May 26th through Thursday, May 28th. And again, to do the entire school district at large, it's going to take more than one day because we have to maintain all of the health regulations and social distancing requirements to establish a drive-through system across our school district that likely will be implemented alphabetically. So the administrative team is currently working on this and will share more information with our families. Because students will not be in class on May 26th, May 27th, and May 28th, our teachers will be actively engaged in professional development related to the future of blended learning in the event that we are unable to start school in August. So we are learning from the remote learning that's currently going on, but if circumstances would determine that we are unable to return to school in August, which we absolutely hope is not true, we want to have a plan in place and continue our opportunities for professional growth and development with classroom teachers specifically related to sustaining a blended learning environment or a hybrid blended learning environment as multiple models might be possible for what could be required come August based upon the health recommendations. So again, as always, as additional information is learned, we will share it with our families. Also, for planning purposes, for summer of 2020, our school campus will remain closed until further notice. Access to all buildings and district facilities is completely restricted based upon the ongoing health order. The Eagle Summer Day Camp will unfortunately be required to be canceled. The governor did confer today that, or confirmed today, excuse me, that the social distancing requirement for groups is 10 or less. It is not physically possible for us to host a summer camp for 250 students with all the health regulations and restrictions that we put in place and the changes that are possible. So to help our families, be planful for our families so that they actually can make necessary arrangements related to daycare in the event they are required to go back to work, we will provide written notice tomorrow that the summer camp will be canceled. Other summer camps related to athletics and more that relate to students, we're currently canceling through July 6th. So we are waiting for the additional information from the Franklin County Health Department and the Ohio Department of Health to determine what athletic-related summer camps might still be possible in the month of July. We have some hope that something could potentially happen, but until we get the additional information, right now, we're canceling everything on the school campus really through July 6th. School facilities and equipment will begin a deep cleaning process based upon the protocols we received from the Franklin County and Ohio Departments of Health. We're preparing multiple scenarios as we look towards August, just in case it would be necessary to continue remote learning, introduce a blended learning environment, evaluate staggered school days, or a hybrid schedule of any other situation that would require students to come to school part-time or full-time for X number of days per week. So we are in conversations with other central Ohio school districts. We're actually doing this work together because together we are stronger. So we're learning from each other to try to discover opportunities that could be provided to students in the event that a traditional school day is not possible come August. We will be having conversations. I've received several inquiries from parents asking specifically, what happens to my child if they return to school in August? Is the teacher assuming that they actually did super successful in all of the remote learning activities in the curriculum that was required? We will ask our teachers to be mindful of assessing the remote learning impact for the upcoming school year so that we, as always, we can continue to respond to individual student needs because we are clearly understand that not every student will succeed at the same level in remote learning, but we will make sure that we identify what opportunities, if any, exist for each child and what else we can do academically to support them, both academically and developmentally to ensure they can be successful. Again, our teachers will participate in blended learning, Schoology, and more professional development opportunities for the last three days of May when we're actually working with the student pickup and drop-off situations for personal belongings. And as always, we'll continue to provide additional information to our families as it's learned. So I know this is a lot of information, but we absolutely want to be responsive and transparent about the feedback we received from 1,440 different types of respondents based upon the building. It could be one parent in multiple buildings, as Dr. Mamiya had said, but clearly want to incorporate that feedback into our planning because we are committed to doing everything we can to support academic and student developmental outcomes within our school district on a daily basis. With that, we will transition to questions or comments from the Board of Education related to the remote learning survey or the year-end updates that I provided.
That was very complete Superintendent Sawyers. I think you and your team have done an outstanding job of managing through this unique period, shall we say. Lots of very challenging things to do, and I really, I think you've done a spectacular job, you and your entire team.
Thank you very much.
I would echo that and just again, thank everybody for the attention to detail trying to cover the bases from technology to coordination, communication, student well-being. You know, I know it's a lot, and it's sort of unprecedented, and it was done in a very, very short timeframe. And I appreciate you getting the survey out as quickly as you did. I think it's a pretty high response rate. I know we don't have the number breakdown in terms of multiple surveys, but when we get that kind of participation that quickly, clearly, our parent community is engaged and wanting to weigh in with their feelings. I know, and again, do not take this the wrong way because I know we're making great strides in such a period of time, but I know you'll be looking at best-in-class practices and looking for ways to improve the remainder of the year. The question 19, I know there was a lot of positive in there, but there was still roughly 30%, I think, that were neutral to negative around the guidance that their student was receiving. So that's a fairly high number if we extrapolate that over, you know, 5,000 students. And, you know, I want to be mindful of that. And again, I say that only in the recognition of that I know this group will always be seeking continuous improvement. And we've got a stub period, if you will, here at the end of the year that we've got to manage through, and I know you'll try to do all you can to improve it, but if, you know, we don't know the circumstances going into the fall, if we should end up in this situation again, you just would want to make sure that we've looked at all the feedback and tried to improve on that grade level and classroom level going forward. So I don't know if it'd be feasible or it's something to think about whether we might survey again at the end of the year perhaps, or is just in terms of, you know, what did we see of the impact or change or positives or negatives over this last period of time that we're improving on remote learning? So again, I say that as constructive comments. Again, really appreciate everyone's efforts from top to bottom of the district to help our students and parent community move forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mike or Becky, or Mike or Debbie, sorry. Becky, I see you on the screen.
I think the district has done an incredible job of pivoting really quickly to virtual learning. So I just want to thank everyone involved. And, you know, a point that you all brought up that I think is really important to remember is teachers are missing the interaction with students as well. I know students are missing teachers, but teachers are not used to not having their students in the classroom. So I think this is a learning experience from both sides, both the teachers trying to meet student needs and students giving feedback about what they miss the most right now. So I appreciate that we did this survey and that we're looking at opportunities to meet student needs in a different way during this period. One question I had, I think for you, Michael, is you mentioned that there were some student privacy issues around conducting Zoom classrooms. Can you say a little more about that?
So part of the issue with Zoom that came out was in relationship to FERPA and the federal law for student privacy. And there were not safeguards originally put in place through Zoom not to sell the advertisement rights to like Facebook or some other third party. So Schoology is an example because it's a learning management system that's school-based, has specific FERPA regulations that are tied to it as part of licensure. Zoom did not have that. Now, they have since corrected it, but several states or major cities had to stop using it because of the FERPA violations, that student identifiable information or parent identifiable information because our kindergarten, our parents are logging in, but in grades one through 12, our students are logging in, and that data was being given or sold or used for advertisement purposes because it wasn't protected by FERPA. So Zoom has corrected that issue to the best of our knowledge, but we are still aware of many school districts throughout the United States that are no longer using Zoom for that purpose because of the FERPA violation.
Is this environment an alternative to Zoom?
Yes, Google Hangouts is also an environment that is safe.
It seemed like there was a little bit of a conflict in the response of parents and them raising concerns about wanting the virtual classroom, but then it didn't seem like we were getting good response when we put virtual classrooms out there. Is there any thoughts on why we're not getting good response on that?
So we do believe there is responsiveness to the virtual classroom, but it's not in a traditional sense. It's being used for small groups of students, not per se, large group instruction. So it's not necessarily synchronous to be live, but it's asynchronous in that it's a videotape in Schoology or a teacher scheduling a Google Hangout or a teacher scheduling a one-on-one conference or a one-on-three conference or one-on-five conference with a group of students specifically. Our families are responding to that. So we are getting positive feedback from teachers that, and from parents even in the survey data, relative to the fact that that type of environment's working. Where Mrs. LeBeau went was that while three teachers all scheduled Google Hangouts all at the same time, and I can't be three places at once, so you're frustrating me as an end user, why aren't your teachers communicating? So we have since figured that out with her massive spreadsheet as an example at the middle school where they're now documenting when they're doing that because we've created the flexibility in that we're not going to school for the normal day. So teachers aren't scheduling their class to be in a Google Hangout during their normal class time because kids have said, I don't want to go to school at 8:00 in the morning. So it's the push-pull of that situation to meet the needs of the child, but at the same time alleviate that frustration that if I'm going to school between 10:00 and 3:00, you all can't schedule at the same time. So don't do that to me because I can't be five places at once.
And I guess a question for Mrs. LeBeau. It sounds like the middle school is doing the most in terms of live classroom or virtual classroom. Do you feel like you're getting strong participation in those virtual classrooms?
I don't know if we're doing the most. I would say that we are doing a lot. My teachers miss our kids. We miss them. So we are doing as much as we can without trying really hard not to create angst and trying with kids about conflicting times, trying really hard to acknowledge that middle schoolers and high schoolers are nocturnal. And so if we had a Google Meet at 10:00 PM, it'd be awesome. So, you know, we're just trying, we want to be as responsive to children. That's the middle school mentality, be as responsive to children as we can possibly be. And that's the napalm mentality because the kids are firm.
Thank you. Michael, one other question for you. And this is probably a little self-serving, but can you tell a little bit more about how we're going to handle virtual commencement?
No, because I don't have all those details yet because Mr. Kramer and the senior team are finalizing that. So I don't know if we want to let all that out yet. Mr. Kramer, I'll defer to you.
Yeah, so we had our first meeting with the videographer last week. We have been working with senior team. We've had several meetings so far. We're going to make it as close to our traditional graduation as possible, meaning all the pieces that you would typically see, you will see just in recorded fashion. That's where we're at right now. We are working through some of those logistics because obviously, it is difficult to coordinate, for example, the choir singing, but that is our goal at this time.
That's awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just going to look a little bit different, Debbie, but you're going to be happy.
Thanks so much.
Just want to make sure, Mike, you don't have anything?
No, I don't think you have anything for me to add. So I'll just say, obviously, this is a completely unusual time and, you know, there's so many different perspectives and opinions out there on what the right thing to do is. You know, I just truly appreciate the, again, the thoughtfulness, but the desire and passion to want to do the best that our staff and teachers can do for our students. So, you know, we haven't hit a home run every time, but this is definitely a group that's going to figure it out. And Mr. Sawyers, I definitely appreciate how you've repurposed the last week of school so that if the worst situation does happen and the kids can't come back in the fall, that we're even that much better prepared. So continuing to just pull all the right luck over. So appreciate everybody's work there.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm just going to echo that. And as we talk about, it's, I mean, it always is students first at New Albany, and it's a good reminder to folks that we have, you know, 5,000 individuals that we're trying to educate every day, and they all learn in different ways. They all sleep and eat and drink in different ways, and to try to coordinate all that remotely is a monumental task. And we really appreciate all of the building principles, the administration for everything that you're doing. And I know we've got a lot more on the agenda, but just again, I think it's fair to say that it's very much appreciated.
Our kids are doing awesome.
So.
If I could add one more comment, one just related to the grade policy. I know there's a lot of interest in that in the community, and I don't know whether we plan a separate communication. I know with this being a unique meeting, it's a little more challenging to access it by our parents who are eager to hear the policy. So I don't know if there'll be a separate communication, if we could just make sure that this gets packaged up in an easy-to-use, easy-to-access way.
Yeah, the communication's going out tomorrow related to grading and reporting. So it'll go out district-wide, but it likely will go through the building levels because of the differences of what's happening in specific grade-level bands. So that information will get communicated tomorrow to classroom or to families.
Okay. And then I just wanted to echo, maybe follow on Mrs. Kowalski's comments about the use of technology and meetings, and I know it's complicated. I know it's scheduling. I know, you know, it's new. I just, I think that there's a number of people in the community, I think somebody came through the survey, that would look at technology and our one-to-one initiative and saying this is an opportunity for us to do more relative to direct instruction. I even look at this meeting, I could see 16 of you very clearly. You almost spent it in a live board meeting, the expressions and facial expressions and the like. And I think it's an opportunity with our one-to-one initiative and with the improving technologies to see how we might be able to integrate that. I know, and again, maybe Debbie said, maybe a self-serving comment. I know that my third grader is the most engaged throughout the day when he has that one-to-one through a video or through a classroom. You know, he is effectively in school during that time. So, of course, they all love to be glued to their iPads for other different reasons, so why not for school? So I just throw that out there as, again, know we're going to do the best we can to improve any of that relative to the remainder of the year, but as we look to the But as we look to the future, this would really challenge us as we always do to look for that that best in class model and try to achieve it. So.
We would agree. All right. So next item is the five-year forecast.
So I am sharing my attached to board docs, and then I also emailed it out to the board on Friday, is the October 2019 five-year forecast and notes, the draft May forecast, and then the draft notes. I'm not going to put those up here. I just have a quick slideshow that I will talk through. Then we can then we can talk. So you know that the statement of purpose to create a culture of accountability that achieves the best academic and developmental outcomes for each student is what drives everything that we do. I think you just heard a lot of that. This slide is just, it's a comparison, and I'm going to talk through all of the different changes.
Second, you went to presentation mode, but because you're in full slide, we can't see your slides. So you're going to have to go back out of present.
Leave it like that?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, somebody wanted in. Okay, so this slide is what I'm mostly going to have up here today and talk through, just some of the changes that I made in the forecast. Mike and I worked together. We talked through some of this with John. I've talked to different board members. And I feel like this forecast is as reasonable as it can be, given the information that I have. So on the revenue side, basically what I did was go through real estate tax. I decreased fiscal year '21, so next year, collections. I assumed that our delinquent taxes would be more by about 2% or $1 million. And then in fiscal '22, I had that coming back to what we would normally collect. And the reason that I did that is that I looked back through the last recession. I went back to see what happened with our real estate taxes, and that was driven mostly by a real estate market that crashed, and that's about what happened through that recession. Now, this is obviously an area of risk, so we're going to have to keep an eye on that. The longer people are unemployed, the less likely they are to pay their taxes. Now, having said that, most people, most residents have their taxes as part of their escrow, so would already be being paid and being collected. So if we see a decrease, it wouldn't be this year. It would be next year or perhaps the year after that. I have also heard that the county Franklin County auditors, and I think all auditors across the state have kind of thrown out that the potential of pushing out the August payment, what would have been a July payment, pushing it out to the end of August. For us, that's just a timing issue, and because we have reserves, we're going to be okay. If we didn't, we would have a cash flow issue. That won't change what the tax bill is. It just changes when it'll be paid. And as I said, because most residents have to pay that, well, they don't have to, but they include their taxes in their escrow as part of their monthly house payment. Really, what we're going to look at there is probably more commercial industrial pushing off their tax payment because they wouldn't have to make it as early. So that's the only change that I made in real estate taxes. State foundation. So I've been in a lot of meetings. I've had meetings where Aaron Roush with the Ohio Department of Education has been in talking about what the state is doing. So if you remember, a few weeks ago, Governor DeWine asked all of the state departments to look at 20% reductions. Aaron talked to us about that and said that what his charge was was 20% reduction in current year unspent money. So if that holds true, it would only be four and a half percent for them. However, because, you know, this seems to be so much worse than what people were expecting, and people were staying unemployed longer, we've looked at, they probably won't make the reduction in the current year, but we'll look to next year. And if I'm pushing that cutoff, it's probably going to be a little bit higher. So I have built into the forecast a 10% reduction in state aid. And I left it at that level because we expect that the state will be using most of their rainy day fund that they have set aside for unemployment and other programming. So they're not going to have money to fall back on. The next biennial budget would be for us fiscal year '22 and '23. So if they reduce our budget by 10%, it is unlikely, given the feeling that legislatures have for districts like New Albany, it's unlikely that they're going to give us money back. So I went ahead and left that at that 10% mark throughout the reduced amount throughout the five-year forecast. On income tax sharing, I had, again, I looked back at what happened during the last recession, but then I felt that I should just reach out to the city to see what they're looking at because the majority of their income tax or their tax collections are income tax. And they actually sent me a calculation for this year. There would be a reduction they're expecting in the current year, and then next year, a reduction. And that ends up being about a 15% reduction in both of those years, the 15% of what still hasn't been collected this year. So the remaining amount this year and then of all of next year's taxes, which is obviously impactful to us. Interest income. So we know that the markets have not done well. Interest rates are not great. I actually calculated what kind of interest we were going to earn on the current investments that we have, and they go through, some of them go through next year. So it ends up being about a 50% reduction in income tax or interest income next year. And then I reduced an additional 25% in fiscal year '22. And there are two reasons. First, the market, but then as we look forward, we're going to have lower and lower balances, less and less money to invest. So it's not likely that we're going to go back up to where we are now. And then in the current year, most of these changes, really, the reductions don't, I don't think that they're going to really impact us until next year. However, in other income, which includes pay to participate tuition, those fees, class fees, we know that we aren't going to collect any more spring pay to participate fees for athletics. We're refunding those who have paid it. We also refunding all-day kindergarten tuition. And some of the other refunds aren't general fund, but the impact to the general fund is actually a $350,000 decrease in the current year. So then in looking forward into fiscal year '21, I did not bring that back as though we came back into school and everything is going to be fine because we don't know that, and we're kind of hearing that it could go either way. So I only show that as coming back about half of what we would normally collect for for pay to participate. And then there is one positive. In the current year, I included an increase of $127,253, and that's because the Bureau of Workers' Compensation is refunding school districts, well, I think all employers, their fiscal 2018 payment. So those were the changes that I made in our in the revenue, which had quite an impact. Then when you look at expenditures, I didn't make a lot of changes there just because I really am not sure what those impacts will be. I do know that we have been looking all year at the reduced personnel costs due to attrition and the new hire. We're under budget for the new hire that we have in the forecast. And then we obviously aren't going to have a lot of overtime for spring. And normally, we would have had a lot of field trips and extra and overtime for just spring. It's just spring. So it's spring cleaning, we have field work, all of that stuff. So I did lower Personnel Services by $150,000 in the current year. Retirement benefits are reduced by about $130,000. Most of that is just basically the changes in payroll and offset in retirement benefits. Then Purchase Services, I did reduce by $150,000 in the current year. That's based on reduced utilities. Contracted services are less now, and then our autism scholarship actually came in a little bit lower. I have not changed materials and supplies. Capital Outlay, I did reduce the current year by $300,000, but increased the current year in transfers so that we could move that money to PI to help offset some of the other projects that we need to complete. And then, not this year, but next year, we normally have been transferring around $3.5 million from general fund into PI. And in talking with Michael, we think that because of the impacts that a lot of the revenue impacts that we're having that are negative, we've reduced that to $2.5 million. If you remember, when we passed the permanent improvement levy, we promised voters that we would continue to pay $1.3 million out of general fund for capital improvements because the levy only brought in 1.1 million, and we had identified at least $2.4 million. So we could reduce that a little bit more if we need to, but we also know that while we're looking forward, we have more things coming that we hadn't anticipated. So basically what that does then, if you look at the bottom part of that slide, you can see that we were in October expecting at the end of the fifth year a $3.9 million ending cash balance positive. Those changes that were made in the forecast for revenue and expenditures actually gives us projecting a $1.6 million negative ending cash balance at the end of the fifth year. We're still okay in the first few years, but because of even just a little bit that happened in fiscal year '20, we end up deficit spending in the current year, which, as we all know, is the longer you deficit spend, the more you're dipping into that savings account. I would say that these are the things that the times that it's important for us to have an ending cash balance that is healthy. Because unlike districts, and I've heard from a lot of districts, there are some people that aren't going to be able to even have cash flow in in the beginning of next year, and will have to borrow. Because we've been really good about how we're spending, very thoughtful about the things we're spending money on, we have a cash reserve. So the things that the board will really need to discuss are, you know, some things that we've we've heard was, you know, should we, for those items, those revenue items that we can't calculate, should I reduce all of them by 10% or should I reduce all of them by 20%? And I did a quick calculation just to see what that would do. And if we reduced all other revenue that can't be calculated by 10%, we would have a negative ending cash balance at the end of the fifth year of $8.2 million. And if we reduced it by 20%, we would have a negative ending cash balance of $15.3 million. So really, Michael and I worked together and put this forecast together, but it is a board's forecast. The other thing that we need to think about, and I don't have anything different in the forecast than what we've had before for raises and such, because we were supposed to start negotiations with our classified group in April, two weeks ago. That didn't happen. We were supposed to start with plea in May, and that's likely not going to happen because of the social distancing. So we really don't know when that's going to, what what that outcome is going to be, and those agreements both expire June 30th of 2020. So clearly, there's more work to be done there, but until I know what should go in there, I haven't made any changes for that. I do believe that the forecast that I'm presenting, that you had for over the weekend to look at, and then tonight, I think it's reasonable, but happy to discuss any of the, anything else that any other questions you have.
Any questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. Obviously, it's.
Sorry, sorry. Had to hit my microphone. It's nowhere near as pretty a picture as it was a month ago, two months ago. And I think we just have to be mindful of that. I I am grateful for the work that we've done over the last couple of years and the work that the administration has done in in managing our resources. And we're in a, we're in a pretty good place now, but, you know, things changed really quickly. And so that affects, that will affect all of our decisions going forward.
For sure. We have, I mean, there are several areas that are at huge risks, real estate tax collections. You know, that's anybody's guess. This crisis isn't being driven by the housing market. However, if people are out of work long enough, can't make their house payments, then they're going to need to sell their house, and does that cause another housing crisis? And then what happens to delinquent taxes, more people paying or not paying their taxes? So that's definitely one. Income tax sharing, I feel like what we did, based on what I received back from the city, is probably good. However, we don't know that. Well, those two definitely, and then state foundation, and we don't get a lot from state foundation, but when you start adding all of these things together, it's huge. It's a big impact, and you just see it. You go from almost $4 million to 1.6 negative.
I think the other thing that's important to understand from a board perspective is that this is the forecast as we know it today, based upon all the information we've been able to collect and the really research that was done going back to 2008, to Becky's point, and the analysis that we did related to what happened in the housing market related to the recession. COVID-19's impact should be more widely understood by October. And you technically can change the forecast at any point in time, but the next required point in time to do it is October, where we should have more information to determine the long-term impact of what's going to happen to the five-year forecast based upon the economic impact of COVID-19. But to Mr. Darrow's point, the current information provided and all the homework that was done by Ms. Jenkins and working with all the people that contribute to the information that makes up the forecast is not positive at this stage of the game.
Well, this is why we've worked so hard to be really frugal and thoughtful with the taxpayer dollars because you never know when a situation like this is going to come up. And so, you know, thank you for your work. And it's just, you know, as as Mr. Darrow said, it's a good reminder to us we have to keep making very smart financial decisions to help lead the district through this tough time. So we have a responsibility to taxpayers. And we also have a responsibility to provide the best education that we can, and we're going to, we're going to do both. So. Any other, any questions? I just want to make sure we don't have any questions. Okay. Then that ends the first reading of the five-year forecast and moves us into our next area, which is Treasurer's Items. So Ms. Jenkins, you get to move on to the monthly financial statement.
Do we want a motion in a second before I start?
That would be a good thing. So entertain a motion on the Treasurer's Items, please. Mr. Darrow, second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Newmaw. I'm going to give it to Mr. Newmaw. He beat you to it, so.
So financials, more numbers. That's just what everybody wants, right? Monthly financials, we are within about $95,000 of our estimate, and that's, of course, varying. Those are just different areas. We're a little bit under in real estate collections. I believe that's due to a TIF timing, but we'll definitely check into that. We're a little over collection and income tax sharing. Hopefully, that continues. But that may even out as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. And then grant, foundation payments are less than what we have anticipated. I really have no idea why that's happening. Usually, we have some kind of a adjustment that they make towards the end of the year, so expecting that to get back to what we received last year. And then we've been under budget in all of our expenditure areas, and that continues. I do think that personnel, one thing that we have not paid at this point, and we would have, are spring supplementals, and that's still being figured out. So that will bring that a little bit closer to actual if we end up paying that. But right now, we're still on track to end the year where we expect to. And then we have just various appropriation modifications. They are all federal grants, and they are all just to align with the allocations that they've given us. That's it.
Any questions?
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. Now I would entertain a motion on Superintendent's Items, A through D.
So moved.
Back in my Mr. Bush, Mr. Sawyers?
Thank you, President McCollum. Board of Education members, for Personnel Action Items this evening. We start looking towards the 2020-21 school year. There are seven teachers. There are seven teachers that are being recommended this evening for new hires to our school district to replace retiring teachers and/or to fill vacancies that are required based upon student enrollment. Additionally, we accept resignations for employees that will no longer be with us as we look towards the 2020-21 school year. Lastly, on the agenda for personnel this evening, it's my pleasure to introduce to you, and I know he just popped up on your screen, um, Thomas Tommy Schneider. Tommy is being recommended to become the new intermediate assistant principal. We welcome Tommy effective August 1st, 2020, with some additional transition times throughout the summer to facilitate his transition into his new role as assistant principal at the New Albany Intermediate School. Mr. Schneider will replace Mr. Garrity, who has been selected to become a new elementary principal in the Worthington City Schools. So as much as we are excited for Patrick's, um, continued efforts to learn and grow and become a leader at the principal level, it created a vacancy that Mrs. Noack and the intermediate school team working with Mr. Emery and Mrs. Lofton that we had to fill. So fortunately, we have found a rock star candidate and his name is Tommy Schneider. Tommy Schneider brings a wider range of experience to the assistant principal position through his work currently with the Hilliard City Schools. He's most recently focused on leading the R Factor Initiative with students and staff, including the Lead Now Protocols, building positive school culture, as well as serving as an RTI coach to support students' academic and social emotional wellbeing. As a classroom teacher, Mr. Schneider taught social studies and language arts in grades five, six, and seven, um, as well as he serves as the building level leader for the student support liaison at Hilliard Tharp Sixth Grade Building in Hilliard. Prior to coming to Hilliard, he was a teacher, um, in the Southwestern City Schools and Ashboro, North Carolina. Mr. Schneider received his bachelor's arts degree from Muskingham University and his master's degree in educational leadership from High Point University. Mr. Schneider resides in Grove City with his wife Grace and his infant son Nate. So it's my pleasure to introduce, um, Tommy Schneider, um, virtually to the Board of Education tonight. We will do a welcome video with Tommy, um, to send to our intermediate school families, upon his confirmation this evening, as well as a written announcement. But Tommy, I'm going to give you an opportunity to greet the Board of Education and welcome to our school district.
Thank you so much. Uh, it's a wonderful opportunity to be here. I really appreciate it. Um, I would like to, I would like to first off, thank the school board, Superintendent Sawyers, the intermediate administrative team for this, this opportunity and for believing in me throughout this entire process. I'm absolutely beyond excited for this journey and the opportunity to serve the school and the community. Thank you again.
You're welcome. Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Look forward to meeting you all in person very, very soon.
Anyone who wears a coat and tie, uh, on a Zoom meeting or a Google Meet, I give them credit, so.
I'm just sitting in my kitchen with my suit and tie on again.
You've got to know, I've been very well in this kitchen, so we've done everything virtually, but it just shows you that it's possible.
Absolutely.
Oh, it's fun.
We won't ask if you're wearing shorts instead of a, you know, suit, slacks. I said we won't ask, we don't want to know.
Letter B this evening for general business, um, includes action items, the pursuant negotiated agreement for enrollment of employees' children that qualify on the terms and conditions of their employment. Number two this evening is a recommendation to offer a five-year lease to, um, the Healthy New Albany organization. Was successful in actually contacting Facebook to fill a community need to actually, um, ask Facebook to purchase a box truck that can be used by the Height Center and the food pantry, um, to benefit the school district and our families that also qualify for free and reduced lunch or provide services through the food pantry specifically. So based upon specific needs, um, I was successful in getting Facebook to agree to give us the box truck. So it will be owned by the school district based upon all the legalese of how we had to go through the process to actually secure the truck, but we will lease it to Healthy New Albany for a five-year term at $1 per year. Um, and also in addition to that, um, the other items that are really of importance to stand out on the agenda in this section are related to our summer, um, asphalt repair, sidewalk installation work, um, and specific seal coating related to the playground and the work that's already underway. So I will, I'm happy to report that we're actually ahead of schedule, unfortunately, because of the pandemic. But the old playground equipment that was supposed to be removed at New Albany Primary Intermediate Middle School is gone. Our staff did it in three days, um, so it was quite an event to watch. But all of it has disappeared and our contracted vendor is in the process of arriving to the school campus to continue that work for hopeful stu, hopeful student play yet this summer. Letter C this evening for board resolution is the suspension of the board policy regarding student grading system to effectuate the change that was described through our board presentation this evening, um, that we will make public tomorrow to our students and our families. And then letter D this evening, as always, we're very, very grateful for the generosity of our entire community. Most notable on this is the donation that we received. We applied for a competitive grant for Facebook to support, um, the humanoid robotics for our robotics program at the high school levels. So Facebook, in addition to the box truck, also did award us a grant for the humanoid robot, and the Anabot. And then we also received a grant from the New Albany Community Foundation for COVID-19 support, um, to provide food for students in needs within cooperation with the food pantry, as well as to provide internet, um, hotspots to students that lack technology, our internet access at home. So we provided them a device and the New Albany Community Foundation also found us a way to give them hotspots to continue learning at home during COVID-19. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Michael, do you have, um, an update on how the New Albany Food Pantry is doing right now?
So I can tell you on a weekly basis, um, we're feeding approximately 250 students and 80 families. We had started around 150 students and about 60 families, um, when COVID-19 first began. So we have seen an increase, um, in families contacting the school district for the first time because parent, a parent or parents are both unemployed. So we've actually had an uptick in services, but, um, our community was extremely generous in responding to our ask back in March on that Sunday evening when we presented the opportunity to order from Amazon and have food or other items directly delivered to, um, the Height Center for Healthy New Albany and the New Albany Food Pantry. There are lots and lots of boxes that came from Amazon, so we are very fortunate. But we have now extended the service to more families on a weekly basis. Um, and fortunately, we are still successful and that we have food and resources available. Um, many people have donated, donated directly to the food pantry, but on average, I'm going to tell you, there's 250 people a week that are getting food from the food pantry.
So would you say there's an ongoing need for additional donations?
I would say yes, um, potentially directly to the food pantry. So I've redirected the families that have reached out directly to me back to the food pantry in case there's a specific ask, um, of something that the family could order and have delivered or if they want to make a monetary donation instead. So I've rerouted those back to the food pantry now. I know we took down the Amazon order site because those orders had been fulfilled. But I know there's still people that have been interested and working directly to support providing food to families in need. So I would still encourage our families in the school district to contact the food pantry directly or email me and I'll facilitate the connection or Mr. Hood. So John Hood is very, very active and working with the food pantry on a weekly basis as our liaison from the school district to ensure we're meeting the needs of our students and their families.
Thank you.
We're very.
Okay, if you have any other questions, just roll call, please.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Newmaw?
Yes.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. This item is executive session, so I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session as permitted by section 121.22G4 of the Ohio Revised Code. Preparing for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
I'm moved.
Mr. Darrow, second?
Second.
Newmaw? Roll call, please.
Vice President Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Newmaw?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Ms. Kalanowski?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes, uh, we are adjourned to executive session and as we come out of executive session tonight, there will be no further action taken, so thank you all.
Everybody, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.